At the bar, what order? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rexroth?
President.
Commissioner Wessel?
Here.
Commissioner Lautner?
President.
With permission, I think we did the pledge in moment earlier today. I think we can skip that, if that's okay with everyone.
Sorry.
Approval agenda and late deletions. The one thing I know is we don't have minutes from last meeting, so item number one, I think, could be removed because there are no minutes for us to approve.
Okay, fine.
Any other additions or deletions?
I had communication with the treasurer this weekend who urged us to keep moving forward with the transition and asked a question about the resolution of that we need signature for HR, signature for finance. And I'm, it's above my pay grade, but I think we ought to have discussion of that. That was one of Raymond's recommendations, I think. And I don't know if you could add that on the agenda, maybe?
Sure. Do you have an idea where you'd like?
I think that just keeps us moving toward the transition.
Would you like to put that right after number three update from transition team meeting? So that's, we're going to call that resolution discussion, I guess? Is that... Right. Okay.
Will we approve the agenda?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? We have an agenda. Any public comment? There being none, any commissioner comments? There being none, we'll move on to the action items. And I guess number two, Reiman billing is there. So Sean, would you like to lead us through this?
Yeah, I was asked to put this on. I will say, I don't have any bottom information personally on this, but just from a invoice receiving perspective, I'm aware a couple of weeks back of a submission from Raymond that was, there's actually, I believe, two bodies of work that are, depending on who you talk to, co-mingle or not intended to co-mingle. But there was the work related to, which resulted in this document. So I just think of that as a transition engagement. There was also billing related to questions asked relative to policies, I believe, as we look going forward with HR. And so both of those resulted in amounts that we kind of sat on the invoice because in the first case, the amount was above the initial contract. In the second, we didn't recognize the body of work. And so I believe there have been questions from the partner in charge offline. And I believe we put this on here just to maybe get them in public and discuss where to go with that, is my understanding.
And I, with your permission, I'll speak to that. Steve Peacock called me on Friday, Thursday, Friday, and was concerned that we were concerned about overbilling, that they had billed us extra money up beyond the contract. And Steve wanted to make sure there weren't hard feelings. And I said, well, that's not, I'll bring it to Sean and Deb. I think there were some words between Deb and Raymond about that. And Steve's question for me was, is there concern about our firm? And is there anything we need to do to mend relationships? And so I just put, I asked Sean to put this on there, and I don't know anything about it.
So can you fill us in some detail as far as?
I probably am the one that's closest to this, so I'll just kind of give you a background. Before I was hired, back in November of 2022, there were discussions to engage Raymond with a part of the transition to provide training. And so there were initial discussions about hiring them. There was a number that had been put out during that discussion that's in the minutes that speak to about $20,000 for them to do training to assist the staff at that time, which was the prior finance director. Sean, obviously, was not part of this either. So to that point, over the next three months, the conversation transitioned from them doing training to them doing actually an assessment. And that's where the, this board had agreed to move forward with the assessment component for them to do at the same rate of the $20,000. And so there was a contract that was entered into, and that was, you know, toward the beginning of the year. It took some time to get that contract executed because there was a lot of going back and forth between our legal counsel and Raymond. And there was, I would, I think it's fair to say that there was a lack of interest on Raymond's part to be able to negotiate that. They pretty much said, this is the agreement. And so we went forward with that in good faith. And so we entered into that agreement at the $20,000. One key component of that contract states that no additional fees should be incurred without the approval of the administrator. And so we moved forward with the project. The assessment was done. Rachel had finished her assessment component, and they were compiling the report. It was at that time, about two weeks before the report was to be given to the board, that I was notified that they were approximately 30% over in their fee. So they were budgeted, I believe, I believe it was 50 hours, and they were at 75 hours. And so that's the first time that I was aware that there was any concern or an overage. And I brought that to their attention, that the contract stated that there was no authorization to go above that, and that that was an issue. And so over the next several billings, we actually, and they agreed, and I think, and I have it in email, that it says that they would write off the additional charges. Okay? I have that in an email. So to that point, we have paid the $20,000 agreed upon to Raymond.
So and this is for the assessment or the training?
This is just, there was no training. It was morphed into an assessment.
Morphed into a assessment. So the training went away. So we have a single contract for $20,000 then?
Correct. Correct. And so from that perspective, so the $20,000 has been paid. In fact, we actually paid 20,000, 21,532.64, so an overage of 1532. Because at the time that I was notified that there was this overage, I had said, well, I understand the importance of having a report out. So we would certainly understand if there would be additional charges related specifically to the report out, having Rachel and Steve here to give that report to the board. So I had said that I would be, you know, willing to move forward with that. Since that, over the $20,000, we have been billed an additional $13,431 and got a credit for $10,000. So they gave us a $10,000 credit. So in essence, we paid 20, but we were actually billed 43,431 for this project. You're, yes, I have the invoices here, and I have everything compiled here.
Because I thought we just got a bill for additional 13 and a credit for 10. So if I do the math in my head, that's a net of about $3,500.
Well, 13 plus the 20, plus the 10, so that's, I'm sorry, that's, well, that's 23.
It'd be 33 billed with a credit of 10, right? Am I doing the math?
Okay, so 33 with an additional credit of 10.
Okay, yeah, because it's not 43.
So in essence, if they had not given us the credit, it would have been 43.
But now it's 23 something, basically with the credit of 10.
You're both saying something different.
Okay, all right. Help me out, Sean. Help to translate.
I believe it's 33. What Deb's saying is 33 net of a $10,000 credit.
That the bill was 40 some. We paid 33 and they paid 40 clean.
Because I just, I had heard the 20 some and an additional 13 billing and a credit of 10. But you're saying that, that you're combining two things into that one thing. You actually got an additional bill for 23,000 with a credit of 10.
In total, the actual billings, what they're saying is it would have been 43, but they gave us a credit of 10.
So they would have originally charged us 210% of their original quote.
Correct. So as soon as, so this dialogue has been ongoing with them regarding that. And I did send communication to Raymond, simply saying, this obviously is a problem, is not acceptable. And, you know, from the standpoint that we agreed to the 20,000, and we have that, you know. So again, I have all of the communication and all of that. And I actually have reached out to Michelle Hodges, is the point person that I've been working with. And the only time Steve had been involved is that as a courtesy, I included him in the communication to Michelle, since he has typically been our principal and the person that we've worked with on this. So in that particular issue, my understanding is we have made good on our $20,000 commitment, but we still, again, have an outstanding bill, in their opinion, of 13,400. It is based on the conversation, would not be the intent, at least would not be my recommendation to move forward with that payment because of the agreement that's been given. However, that's...
By that contract, it said that the administrator had to approve of?
Any overages over the 20,000.
And that wasn't discussed with you until you received an invoice?
It wasn't, it wasn't discussed with me, not until I got an invoice. I think the first invoice was, let me just check there. First invoice was in, because we paid this one. We paid one of the invoices in June. We paid the first invoice for $6,600 in June and paid the second invoice for 6,800, 6,682, I believe, in July. And then that's, it was after those two invoices were paid, which were still within the allotment. It wasn't until the August when I was notified that they were significantly over. And like I said, it was two weeks before the final report was to be given to the board.
So how do you view your response to them at that point? I mean, if that is a notification? But I assume sending an invoice is not a notification of an over. It would be, it would be, before we do the work, we see that we're going to be over by so much, and this is the overage, and you need to authorize that before we proceed. I mean, do you see that?
Yeah.
And there was a second billing for a question about?
Right, that's a second issue. So I'll go into that. So this is the first issue that obviously, to your point, 200% overage is excessive by any means. And even when I was first notified, 30% over, I guess it would be 130% overage in the billing was excessive. And I think that Sean and I have talked about this, you know, from the standpoint that at no point did Raymond come to the county building to do any of this. It was all done virtual. It was all done. And regardless, you know, that's just the point, is like, it's hard for me to understand how they would be so off in the projections considering those things. But that's where we are with the situation. And I, again, I would need direction from the board on how to move forward with this particular invoice. And to Steve's point, I have not had a conversation with him or a conversation with Michelle specifically about, the last thing I had in the conversation was that she said that we would write off, then, the expenses.
Which you would assume would have been everything over.
Correct.
Which is a reasonable assumption, too. What do we, do we need to just make a recommendation to the board for consideration at the next meeting, then? Is that the action step you're looking for?
I think that that would be a fair statement to...
Does anyone, I...
Other than, will you have a conversation with them in the meantime?
Well, I, this is, I did not know that Ty had had a conversation with them last week, so I'm happy to do that. But Ty thinks that it would be beneficial to have another individual as part of that, because I was pretty firm in my communication to them, respectful but firm. So if that's, we can talk about that. But let's go on to the next issue, if I may, because they're obviously somewhat related.
Okay, let's go to the next one, then.
So the second issue, then, has to do with the policy that was presented and discussed with the board in regards to the donation of vacation time to other employees. So when we heard that this was an IRS regulation, we had received, obviously, legal counsel's determination on that policy, or I should say, on that practice, because we didn't have a policy. So we talked with legal. They submitted a recommendation for a policy based on their understanding of the IRS regulation and practice. So at that time, I had placed a call to Steve as our accountant and said, hey, we received this information that this practice does not meet the IRS guidelines based on the way we've currently been operating it. So can you give us some background? Because the reality is, if we've been noncompliant, we in essence have approved over $50,000 worth of vacation time that would potentially have IRS implications for the county and/or the employees. And so that was the question that I asked Steve. And Steve said, well, we've never looked at that as an accountant. And so I said, oh, okay. Well, he said, but we have somebody that has HR specialist within Raymond. Let me have somebody get back to you. So we received a phone call from one of their principals, Tony, who kind of oversees the HR component. Tony then connected Darcy and I with Elizabeth. And I have the names, if that's relevant, we can certainly do that. So this has all just been phone calls and communication. And so Darcy and I got connected with Elizabeth. We explained the situation to her. We forwarded her legal counsel's determination recommendation, and she provided some insight to us. At no point during any of those conversations did anyone say, we can assist you, but there will be an invoice, or there will be a fee schedule, or there will be a cost associated with this. So we had one conversation, and then there was a question, I believe, that was requested at a board meeting to get more clarification. So we went back to Elizabeth. I think it was actually Commissioner Alguire requested, can we make this more personal? Because it was very structured from legal and very structured from Raymond on how this should be handled. So we went back to Elizabeth before we had received any invoice or anything, and asked her if she could give a little bit more insight. And she did. And so as of today, we've received two additional invoices from Raymond for services rendered for recommendations regarding this issue. And I believe we are currently at approximately $2,300.
That's the total of both invoices there?
Yes, I have one for 1340 and another one for 1,000. So 2,340.
Well, we asked them for help, and we didn't ask for a quote. And they gave us that open bill, just, I don't know what to do with that other than open it.
Another lesson?
My concern when Steve called me was, I mean, he was really asking about our relationship. And I want to be sensitive of the fact that he's the one that's going to be auditing us next audit cycle, I believe. Don't we have a contract with him for, don't we have a?
We do, one more year.
So I mean, it's a, it's a situation we have to tread carefully, I think.
Well, I, perhaps. I think we have to tread professionally, and so do they. You know, they have to respect where we're coming from. They dealt with our county for enough years. They've got to, they've almost got to understand where our response is going to be on that. Because I would say this, I don't remember exactly how that contract is written, but if we really felt like we were in a bad position going into our audit next year, there's probably an out clause. I know we negotiated a multi-year contract some years ago. If that's our last year, I'm not sure what that would be. And I don't really want to do that. But there's got to be an understanding. I do agree with Doug that we have to eat the 2,300 on those two for that issue. That may be understandable. It's a little disappointing, because we have leaned on them through this process and kind of would expect that they would be helpful in that sense. But if they have to do it, they've got to do the 2,300. But, you know, to go back to the original contract on the assessment, that one, you know, we shouldn't be paying more than what we agreed to on that one.
I'm going to support Commissioner Lautner on this. I mean, I would have, I mean, I understand your point. But I guess I would send an email to him and ask him point blankly, does a favorable audit depend on overbilling for previous services? If that was a yes, I would immediately discharge them to begin with.
And that may be more appropriate coming from our CFO at this point. I'm never aware, I've never been aware of any other billing for questions. And I know, I think, I think they have been on speed dial in the clerk's office. And I've never been aware of any billing or any request for fees based on advice or recommendation.
In support of Commissioner Lautner and that thing, I mean, my relationship is Plan Moran. I mean, now and then I ask things, and there's like, okay, well, we spend X with you. And if it's a, you know, if it's a couple hour question, I don't get an invoice for every single one of those things either. Because there is that relationship there, the bigger work thing. I mean, if I give them a project, then you pay them. But if it's, so I mean, if we're fair enough to pay those, which they did to work, they sent us a bill, I'm okay. But I think we have to tell them that that other outcome is unacceptable. And I guess we could let them decide how to proceed from there. That would be, that would be my recommendation.
If I can ask Chairman Wessel, how was it left with them?
Well, I was uncomfortable having him call me, because I think he should have called Sean, or he should have called Deb. But I said that we, I would bring that issue to the finance committee, and we've done that. Now I think either Deb or Sean needs to call them back and resolve it. I don't, I'm, I think he called me because I signed a contract on the, on the contract.
I think for historical purposes, Commissioner Wessel, the audit firm works for you as the board. So that's why the contact would have been with you, is it's the?
It's a very good point.
Yeah, it's not that it's greater than the CFO that I am, it is the board commissioner.
Yeah, that's right.
Just to clarify.
Yeah.
He's right. You're right.
So you get to call.
You are correct. I think we can assist in providing...
I'll work with Sean on that. I'm trying to, yep.
Okay. All right. Update from, we're all done with that? No other further on the Reiman thing? Update on the transition team meeting?
So I thought it would be more spending this minute. I can go as deep as you want. But I, the materials I passed out was just, I have an agenda that I used. We pulled together the individuals indicated on there, Deb, Darcy, Sarah, Jen, Leanna, myself, to discuss kind of where we left it, I think, in our last finance committee meeting, which is we received the document from Raymond. There are 33 items listed in that document. I don't believe all of those are finance necessarily related, if they span departments. And so the real, my goal was, first of all, establish a team to ask for support and time. And also the real, the real meeting, the meeting was, in my simple terms, kind of a plan to get a plan. So on the table, I think, are questions around, do we understand the recommendations that they made? Because they may read one way to somebody, but a couple came up in the meeting itself that, like, well, I heard that differently. And that's exactly what I think we were there for. I think there's a question, do we agree with all of them? I don't, you know, the board accepted the findings or the materials, but doesn't mean we have to agree on every item being a priority or if it exists or not. So hopefully, we get some dialogue on that. My real mission here is, I feel like there's a significant body of work, or bodies of work that come out of this. And so getting aligned, divide and conquer kind of thing is maybe important. He's to start to establish expectations around timeline, what we're putting first in line later. So that was really the meeting itself. I think the takeaways felt good. People seemed to understand. I provided that list last time, but it was my shot at how you carve this thing up. And so I asked that in between get togethers, that go through the ones that I suggested are yours. If you don't agree, those are yours, let's have that discussion. But if you agree, they're yours. Where do you stand on the questions I just asked? Do you agree with the comment? Do you understand the recommendation? Do you understand the scope of it? And then get your thoughts on how big is that thing? And based on how big it is, who needs to be together, to get together to stay integrated on the solution. And so we'll start to move out on that. We have another meeting scheduled next week, next Monday. This was just, this happened two days ago. You can see in that agenda what I'm trying to focus on. I mean, I think it's consistent with what we talked about in here before, trying to lay out a purpose and objective. But the expectation, my expectation is control, control, control. Kind of, we don't want to turkey jerky, do this in 10 different pieces and not talk to each other. Internal controls have to stay in place. And so if we start to change something, I want those documented. So my idea was, we got a plan first, we got the document, then we got to get integrated, like, who's going to do what when, be super open on it. And those are the steps to come. So that was my, that was where we are on that and how we go forward. I do, I would like to stay close to you to the extent that you're interested, because this is, executing on this is a significant amount of time. And there are going to be things on that list that I want to make sure that everybody understands what's in motion and what isn't. So that there's no missed expectations with it. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Questions on that?
Do you have, based on staying close, do you have a suggested frequency for these meetings to facilitate that? And we, again, assuming maybe there might be ones called without as much prior notice as we like. But what's your take on that? I mean, we're here to support your position. That's what I understand, and this committee is here for, so.
The challenge is that this is a significant body of work that takes people away from their daily job. And I'm aware of that. And so I'm trying to be conscious of being respectful of that time, but moving at a pace that we feel okay. But early on, I was thinking at least once a week, we would get together with some short-term deliverables in between each of those steps, and then see where that goes longer term, what it would require. Because some of these things are going to extend for quarters, you know, months, quarters, and maybe beyond that. So.
Right now, you feel like the team is working and you're...
Right. I think everybody left with kind of their tasks. If you think about it, the thing that is challenging this, maybe is, this was my item on financial systems, number five on the agenda, was, on the original agenda, sorry, was, my question to the team is, a number of these items, we drew the picture in here last time, and I shared with the team, slide number...
10. If that's one.
Yeah. Slide number 10 is usually gets you there. If you think about this, like, how many of those things are dependent on automation? And do we agree that it has to be dependent on automation? And so what it's going to start to feel like, I think, is, you know, discussions happen all every day. I'd like to take that on, but the solution is automation. And so there's a question of, do I just do nothing? In between times, who's running the automation piece of this? And so I guess the way I view it right now is kind of parallel paths until we know what our desired solution or recommendations would be, recommendation for solution. Because I think we will always, I will challenge that we can't do anything in the interim. There's usually a process step. There may be things like we could take advantage of capabilities with tools that we already have, or we have licenses to, that we're not using. So I asked Leanna to take the first step of that with me, which was, I shared a list of items that, when I'm talking to our current provider, Harris Software, with their help desk, which is really my only contact to date. And I've asked the simple question, like, what, you interface with all the teams here on a regular basis. what, you, you interface with all the teams here on a regular basis, what are we missing? What are we not using that other clients are taking advantage of? Are there capabilities or gaps to solve? And actually, I included that in here, which is the last couple slides, 12 and 13. Those, what I've been doing is, I've been making surface, I've been having discussions, is trying to document them. The items that they came back with are listed on slide 12. So, you're not taking advantage of the time clock, you have a time clock feature, no, we don't, but we have a partner that we could put you in touch with. I sat in on a demo, so I saw kind of what that capability was. Other ones were things like data backup, you're not using a hosted solution, we think you might get advantage from that. There's a purchasing capability, and they have asset management, fixed asset management component. That was just the help desk, what I asked Leanna to try to help me take on is, through the broader Harris relationship, is, no kidding, are there other things that maybe a technician would point us to? So, that's out there, I'm trying to move that in parallel to dividing up the tasks that are, you know, 1 through 33 on our list.
So, Sean, to back up a little bit, on your slide, on your slide 10, your automation.
Yep.
Your accounting software, right now, we have Harris.
So, the, let me back up a step, what I did to come up with this picture, actually, maybe, this was just my attempt to visualize, which may not be great, but on slides eight and nine, is, those were 1 through 33, that were recommendations in here and their findings-
Okay.
-that I labeled. And then, I put a description on those, and gave a little bit of thought, what are they, what is their, they're making a recommendation, what does it feel like? In order to address those, I was looking for common themes, like, what would, what would the action be based on that recommendation? There's a number of those recommendations that are leading to, you need to look at software, you need to look for a capability within that software to handle certain things like vendor, that I call vendor management, but like, our vendor programs, we have a list of all of the vendors, how often do we go through that? So, there's a piece of those, if you think about it, in my mind, it started to group around four themes, and, yeah, not magic, but just, for me, the simpleton, there are some things that were very, they required very little work in my mind, so the scale of it was relatively small, and the priority was relatively low. To me, those were, we'll get to that when we get to it, so that was my first bucket list, as time allows. There's also a bunch of them that are grouped, I call just do-its, but they're kind of, they're recommendations that tended to be process-based, so not necessarily dependent on a technology, and they are owned by a single department. So, for example, cash receiving was targeting, I believe, the treasury department, in the way their recommendation was written. And so, those, I believe, that's a process fix that may be department-aligned, and then it gets more convoluted from there. Like, if you go further right on that page, to me, the next step is, you might be able to fix it with the process, but that process is going to touch multiple departments. So, before you go do anything, you better all be in lockstep, or we're going to drop the ball. And then, the last one, the most convoluted, is something that would be based on automation, tools, capabilities that we currently don't think we have, that would take, you know, until we actually identified the solution, acquired the solution, actually deployed the solution, trained on the solution, like, you're starting to add up a lot of, a lot of time related to some of those automation items, and so, I pulled those furthest. You know, to me, those are the ones that are, excuse me, the most extensive, longest timeframe to get to. And what I'm trying to get help thinking through from the team is, it's easy to go, well, can't fix that because I don't have the ability to reconcile in my current software, I'm done. It's like, no, we can't be done. So, there's been something that's been identified, the long-term solution may be integrated, may be automation. In the short term, are there things that we would choose to do or not with that? So, that's where I'm trying to head, we're two and a half hours into pulling people in on that. But that, those were the four, and there's no magic to that, right? Like, that's just my simpleton, my grouping of things by common themes.
Any other questions, concerns on this?
Well, I have, I do have, I do have a question, and I don't know if it's a concern, but we're, how do you want to take this document? Are we, what do you want to do with this today? Are we going to-
I would use, yeah, that's a good question. I'm, and if I'm doing these inappropriate, I tend to, it's like, if there's things that I would, might want to refer to in our discussion, I'm including them, we may get to some of these, and maybe we don't touch on all of them.
Okay, so I'm, well, let me, let me-
I guess, to your point, I guess my suggestion would be, because none of us have seen this and had attention to digest it, that we review it, and have questions, and talk to them when we see them again, because now this is happening as we speak, it's all very early.
That's kind of where I was going. I do want to take this or read this more, more thoroughly, but as I was scanning it, and I see you'd have a possible suggestion of moving, like, it looks like all payroll to HR, and, you know, when I supported the division of these departments, it's because I wanted the division of the department, so, I do, I, can we keep payroll under CFO? Like, you're looking for, I think you had, or in some of our documents, in the budget, you were looking at another account clerk or something, could that be a payroll specialist?
I understand the question. Let me tell you what I, so that's a slide that I, it looks like I didn't cover, but it's the one before, 12 through 11. This was my process map, this is maybe the way I think, so, I get from what it's worth.
Okay.
I think my challenge is, when I look at this list of 33 items from Reiman, that my concern with it is, that it's, it is directed at, it sounds like, a finance director, and I guess one of my strong beliefs now, sitting in the chair for four or five months, is that it's never as clear as saying payroll belongs to the CFO, or to the finance director.
The finance department, say.
Finance department.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what I was simply trying to lay out here is, and this is one example of dozens or more that we're going to trip into, but when I think, think about what happens with payroll today, it starts in that very first block in a department, it's reviewed by a manager, there's a control, right? That manager is saying, yes, that's what I want to pay for that person, that person for. That is then submitted for processing, and that first step of data preparation is keying in what the manager has on a piece of paperwork. What they're doing when they're keying that data in is, they're looking at things like vacation paybacks, vacation backs, paybacks, shift differentials, individual contracts, and they're looking for all of those items to, did that manager appropriately pay that individual? From that, they enter, they actually manually code that, what we're coding, which results in a recommendation where we're going to pay that person that amount of money, and then there's a review. So, control point two happens after all that coding's done.
Yes.
Here's my, let me beep there, this is the provocative question. As a finance person, I don't care, like, I honestly don't care about any of that. What I care about are the two that I'm circling. I care that our system of record reflects the total payroll appropriately, which is, I boxed it down in control point number three, and I think I care about item, the very last thing on the flow chart, if you follow that through, then we actually make payments, then we actually prepare submissions, recover payroll, third-party vendors we pay. At the end of all that, we file some tax documents. I care about two things in here. Say, just allow me that for one second. Then we go to this whole list of things to take on. If I look at the world that way, who should be taking on those items in between? Forget how we're organized today with people, it's like, what, what is the expertise, where does the subject matter expertise it? What are you signing off for at each of those control points? The last person you want, well, maybe next to last person, you want signing those around, think about the things coming into that coding process, those are all HR, relending, how does the contract work, what's housed with me? What happens the day after a holiday on the PoLan contract, then, did you get that right? Like, to me, those are not, and I suggest they're, it may be being done by a payroll clerk, but I don't really view that as something that I have a whole lot of value to. I care about what is posted to our system of record, holistically related to payroll. Does that make sense? So, this is going way below where a board should care about, but it is just my example of trying to show that, as you get down into the granularity, and you go, who owns payroll? Financials pay payroll, you screwed that up, it's, you know, it's your fault. It's like, well, hold on, like, what part, what part do you really want each role to play? And recognize, there are multiple control points in there, and one last thought on this, we've made, this goes back to the thought that, you remember last time, we talked about a mission statement? And one of the mission statements is related to, I want to align our finance vision to what the mission of, that we're trying to carry out here with our development. Part of what we're trying to move to is department accountability and department responsibility. This is why I, that that go, that manager told me to pay that amount of money, the clerk should be facilitating the payment that that manager identified, and there may be a review in that, which may be control point number two, what is the HR person looking at when they review that coding? And each one of them should answer that question, like, we should understand what the manager's responsible for, what is HR responsible for, what is the finance role accountable for? Because today, I don't, I'm not sure when people are signing off on sheets that it's clear, you know, what their responsibility is.
So if I could hop in for a second, I mean, just to help, we have a similar thing, I mean, the person that puts in payroll, actually keys it in at the end, it's, their job is just to accurately put what is on the paper into the computer. Our department heads, they're supposed to review the time card, did they actually work the overtime hours, then, is this a correct pay scale, is this the stuff? Because they know what they did, they're closest to that, that's really supposed, they're supposed to be responsible, so if there's a, you know, and the first responsibility is the person to put the right stuff down on the time card to begin with. But I kind of get the process, you can't, finance isn't the whole thing, there's, there's other people that own pieces of this that are responsible for getting the right information to the system to put it in, and obviously, that, that's too much of a, you know, part of the other things that, that you need to do, that's too much, I don't ask, you know, my, the person put again, to know all that stuff, because it's impossible for her to know all that stuff. It depends on the department heads knowing enough about their contracts and things to give accurate information. So, I, I understand what you're trying to do here.
But it sounds subtle, but what we just talked through is one of the most, it's scary, right? Like, foundationally, this is changing the way things work. I could show you on any given day, and I don't ever want to embarrass anybody, but there's not a payroll cycle that goes by where I wouldn't be able to point out a question that would lead you to, I don't think that that manager maybe signed off right. It's not a job to catch every one of those. So, when we say we want to shift responsibility and become department-led and department accounting, we're starting to talk about, you know, a change, and so, that change, part of what we've heard people concerned with about oversight and, you know, kind of getting into everybody's swim lane, it also comes, the other side of that is, to date, that's wrapped, it's wrapped them in a blanket a little bit and protected them from themselves. And so, as we start to pull that apart, I want to be clear who's, who's where, and it goes to who's doing the work, and who we think should own those things.
With this, staying on what we had discussed, let's, let's all do our due diligence on this and be ready to ask some more questions when we come back, if that's okay with the rest of the crew here. Can we, Mr. Loebner?
I'm going to that one, because I would have-
So, you've got up above on your, on your map.
Yep, that thing.
Your map. You've got the department, like, I follow what you were saying, but you've got, when it got to, you have the data preparation, enter manual data code, you've got HR slash payroll clerk question mark. So, what I was saying, I guess, is would a payroll specialist then know, know those, the contracts and the overtime, the shift differential, and know how to go back in the budget and see if that, how much overtime's been used, et cetera?
I'm following you, and I think there's a decision from there, is all I wanted to draw out, is that you could, depending on how we lay this out, where we did draw those control blanks, which are my little red circles, and say, what are they doing in each one of those, we're in effect defining then, like, what is somebody's role? I would argue that the person that's, if you're, if you're expecting control number two to truly test that manager, and we want that control as accounting, and we want to, we want to tie everything in effect to an individual contract, then, and, that is not, that is going to be a challenge for what we've defined as a clerk role here historically. It is certainly one well beyond where I feel like I could add any value, and there's a question about, is that more HR or is that? But all I'm doing is trying to be provocative to say, I don't have answers to those, but that's kind of the process that works today, and where I think that, you know, from a pure accounting, finance standpoint, where I think my, my concerns rely, are, you know, outside the circle.
This isn't the final roadmap, this is just a beginning discussion that goes, I mean, that you could actually argue whether you even need control point number two, and say that the department heads should know enough to do this, and we shouldn't need someone to check. I mean, I'm not advising we do that, but what we're looking at isn't like a final plan, it's just a-
No, it's just an example, one of, like, I, I think I could do this on payroll, we could certainly do it on payroll, we could do it on cash proceeding, we could do it on, maybe we could start to hit on each one of those. In some ways, I think there would be value in doing that, because that starts to identify, you know, role responsibility and how, like, what do we mean by accountability, where does that fall? Think about the ones where they're, they start in one department and end in another, we take in money in senior services, but it runs through the treasurer's office, what is the treasurer looking for? What is senior services responsible for? And the reason I think we start to care is, try this one, this bitter angle, is if we get two systems that work in an integrated way, they come with that workflow assumed in the system. And so, that's part of my ERP thought is referring to, like, you're pushing those things electronically now, but when you start to push them electronically, a couple things happen. One is, it forces you to a more consistent process, and so, now, if you're going to do it differently between different departments, you're going to have to come outside of the system, if that makes sense. And so, I think that those, by the time we're done, if we actually went forward with automation, we would be building these kind of workflows for each of the processes that we will be taking on. They're going to, my, my point with all of that is, in every one of those cases, those people start outside of accounting, end outside of accounting, and so, when we talk about like, tool building involvement, that's what I see.
So, based on like, having a chance to look this over and come up with more questions, can we move on now to the next agenda item, or will we have further discussion on this?
Yeah, I didn't mean to throw a bunch of info and- Yeah, I didn't mean to throw a bunch of info and then, this is, like, I'm trying to build an inventory of things that we're all familiar with and hopefully will aid this decision points coming down the road that I see.
The only other question, and this might be something you, and I've got to go way back, a couple of treasures, but receeding. Can receeding be done with our software? The treasurer sets it up with our current software?
It's interesting. So with our current software, I don't know the answer to that one.
Maybe look into that. I think it might be. I think it was just a matter of, well, we've always done it this way, but can we do it a new way and still use that software?
Roland?
Any further discussion on this matter? Do you need anything else from us on this at this time?
As long as, unless there's any input or direction on the transition team, I'll continue to push on.
What, just before we move on, because it's kind of germane to this, what is your thought for a frequency of these meetings? I mean, Chairman, I look for input from anyone on this, administrator, what?
I didn't have a magic date in mind, but I thought initially we might need a couple of back-to-back-to-back to get them off the ground, but in the future, I need monthly.
Monthly, I mean, it kind of helps me get comfortable on, like, reviewing this and getting back. I mean, to Commissioner Lautner's concern, we've got to meet for six months, and I got a lot more questions than if we're going to meet again fairly soon. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me. I think our major function right now is to help the transition process, and we ought to meet when Sean says, I need help.
Okay. So I guess we can assume that we're going to meet fairly soon again.
I would suggest if the driver that.
I'm skipping to an end thing, which I know I'm doing, but it's related to how comfortable I feel with, and I think Commissioner Lautner feels with, just digesting this.
Yeah, I think we need to come back to this pretty soon. So you don't get too far into the weeds before, like, oops.
I, that's exactly why I threw it out. It doesn't make sense. It does start to shape the direction and inspections with the team. If I'm pushing the wrong way, I, I'm.
No, so we're thinking within two to three weeks or something?
Let me have another, I would suggest another meeting or two with the transition team because I think, I'm hopeful that what I can get is reaction that I could speak to so that it's not just me saying, hey, this feels like a lot, or hey, a lot of this really has a long tail to it.
And a lot of this, you're sticking out for discussion with them anyways. Not like this is the way we're doing it. It's just, it's like the.
We.
Right, you're trying to provoke discussion on these items to drill to. So if you have your meeting weekly, sometime a couple of weeks out after that, we're going to have to do that right now, but we'd have, we'd be back here after each had a couple of meetings. Is that, is that comfortable for you, Commissioner Lautner? Okay, so then we move on. Next agenda item is the added agenda item from Commissioner Wessel. We thought that's where we'd stick it in. So because you, can you speak to it?
Yeah, I will speak to it, and I don't want to create, I mean, again, our purpose is to help in the transition process. I know several months ago, we were presented with a resolution that we were encouraged to sign that designated certain offices have responsibility for certain things. And we took that off the agenda because we didn't think it was helpful and we didn't think that it was something we want to take on at that time. And talking to the treasurer, he believes that that's one of the first things we ought to be doing to, and I, it's not, I don't think it's, I don't know. But I wanted Sean to tell us what he thinks we ought to do and Darcy to tell us what they think. My understanding is that currently, tell us what's currently going on. And my understanding is that Darcy needs some information that she's not getting in a timely fashion.
And so a little bit of the tag on to that prior discussion, that's one of the work, the process flow was, why I had it in there was defining what finance versus human resources, including starting with the administrator's role, how that fits together. I think that there's a lot to be clarified into detail. My thought around the finance piece of that resolution is I've talked with individual departments, doing the treasurer clerk. What I most think is critical, just on the finance item, try to be careful to not get into the HR piece of this. I think the HR piece gets complicated because it's, our current HR system is integrated with Harris. And so to the extent we have anything electronic, that's where it sits. But when I, when I was trying to pull these apart, I think that what's important to me ultimately is access to, and eventually, control over the Harris module, so access to those. And any other supplementary thing that happens, if we say grant management, the last piece of that is, we want that to be in, like, the finance person's going to push that on, then we ought to set that up, for example, to include the willingness of this. I don't think that's anything different than, none of that's new. I mean, that's been a path that I've got to myself, John, others, that there's been a willingness to cooperate there. So I honestly feel like what I speak to here is the much smaller piece of the noise that is being, just my opinion. When I think about, like, if you go back, and again, I'm just going to try to stay on the facts with Raymond, if you look at my slide number four, I tried to show what is an example of this. So their recommendation number eight reads like, we recommend transferring management of the system, Harris, I inserted that, the access controls related to Harris, to the financial director, and how the relevant party should create using the timeline, here's some best practices, access to the system should be created by one person, on team to be appropriate for staff person's job duty, so as needed to know basis, kind of a thing. And subject to periodic review. That is the heart of what I think we're talking about. And that's, those are not my words, those are Raymond's. When you tag a few things onto there, this is where it gets a little bit more complex. So item number 25, their recommendation is, we recommend that permissions allowed to access banking information be reviewed regularly. Permission should be provided only when necessary, again, Raymond's words. Number 20, in the blue circle on the bottom. Those who have access to employee records in the payroll module should not have permissions required to make transfers, upload files, social security numbers, and other highly sensitive information should be handled or free to air. Additionally, personnel files, which take to mean both the physical and the electronic versions of those, should remain under the management of the HR director. And so when I think about like resolutions and moving forward, I'm focused on kind of the middle of that page. But what I've asked John to consider, Darcy, Deb, is I am a piece of this from just my swim lane, not the, not the whole. So depending on how we approach it, when we say the resolution, is it a one resolution? Are there multiple ones? How do each of these get addressed? Are there comprehensive olders that are the questions I've had? But I do think it's important, and I do think that, you know, the comments that Raymond makes is imply an orderly transition along a timeline. That timeline is either from immediate to no longer than the end of the year. I think we've been on that trajectory, honestly. On just the finance pieces of it. So I don't know if that's more than you wanted to hear, but that's kind of how I pray.
Well, and I just want to make sure we're not confused because this committee is only interested in finance, not HR, correct? I mean, then we don't have, so I'm understanding, just to make sure I understood what happened. HR is still reports to the administrator.
Correct.
Correct. So I'm just trying to, to your lane thing, I'm trying to figure what lane we're in.
But, and that was, I think, what Melinda was talking about because HR does pay the payroll, which comes from finances, which comes from the.
No, HR isn't doing payroll.
Then you might get there.
They're.
Oh, it did, yes. Yes, yes, yes.
But I think there's some first steps, I mean, to look at this thing, that we can take that are fairly straightforward, and that should be the basis of our first, I mean, I don't think we get this all, I think, from hearing you and understanding process, there's not going to be one all-encompassing, get-it-or-done resolution. We just have to take some steps in order, and I guess we need some of your guidance. I mean, that's the only thing I didn't get out of that. Okay, what is the, what's the low-hanging fruit? What should that resolution?
Well, and I, I don't know enough. I know just enough to be dangerous, but this seems like the easiest thing to accomplish. Our firm says yes. We were told several months ago, we were presented by then, I think, CHET, a resolution to pass. I keep hearing about it, and it's related to finances, it's related to the transition plan, and I'm hearing.
Employee files, supposedly, right?
Pardon?
Employee files, employee files.
There was one component of that, one component of, is what Raymond made reference to.
And Michelle is here, and I'd love to hear from her. I understand that the clerk's office has resisted giving information needed. And if that's not true, that's what I'm hearing.
Well, can you talk to me, do it, because that is not true.
Well, that's, that's related with transition, though. And I, it makes so much sense that the administrator and the finance officer would have access to financial information and not have to go through the clerk's office. I understand that's not true.
That's not true for county clerk, you know, and my staff.
Is this out of line? Can I?
Nope, let's, let's, let's bound through it.
Yeah, I think you should make the answer.
Right, that's all we're here for.
The county clerk and my staff have been no way impeded nor transitioned planning to where you are today. They have access to anything and everything they need. Anything and everything they need. I've heard that someone says they're not getting records, kind of. It's not true. My great perception doesn't make it true.
So I think that the bigger question is, is what's the transition? Is it going to get us there to have to ask permission to get this stuff instead of just having control of this stuff? And that's the question. I don't know. I'm.
We need permission to get that.
Whatever that is. I mean, I think it, the bigger question is like, who holds the key? And, you know, we won't get transitioned unless the key changes hands somewhat. And.
So maybe I can give an example. So most recently, we had an employee who I believe has garnish wages. The mail went to the clerk's office. We didn't get that until probably three or four days later, which those issues are very timely, legal issues. So it's just one example of that there's a process and that perhaps the process needs to change, contacts need to change. I believe there are still some scenarios where records are still recorded under the clerk for things like all employees insurance, things like that. Records go still to the clerk. So I'm not saying that that's anything personal. I'm just saying that's a reality on some of those things. Aflac reporting, Blue Cross and Blue Shield reporting. So if the board's intent is to truly move these things to an HR director's responsibility, then those things need to be transitioned and moved fully into the system that's now responsible for it. So those are just some examples. Again, this is not a personal issue. This is a process issue. And this recommendation came back in November, so I'm simply saying, back in November of 2022, this is not a current administration recommendation. This has been put forward in terms of a process to kind of move things forward.
I'm not going to be blaming for lack of success in timings of things. There are no garnishes being held in my office. I am getting mail from the way to my office, but that just, I'm going to have to deal with the judges. Aflac, I've been cut right out of Aflac. That was done, I believe I was cut off, or was it Aflac?
Yeah, I know, you were cut off, and then told afterwards.
Yeah, I was told afterwards, so I was cut right off of that, so I don't have any answers to that. Blue Cross, I believe someone else is doing that. Now you are asking us to help, and I don't have answers to that. I do not.
I do.
I do not believe I will prove that I am asked.
So I have, I'm the other sole Blue Cross, Blue Shield person. Yep, I'm the initial contact, and then Darcy was added last August. Since then, why here's up 22. I'm 23.
So I think if you have a list of something that you feel is not being done appropriately or that I'm not giving out, I think it would be appropriate to let me know because everything that's been asked for has been given. Copies of files that they need, something that I was responsible for, that I am all under hand, I have payroll files, copies that have been given, everything that has been asked for has been turned over.
The resolution that we, that Mr. Janik presented to us in November, what was that to accomplish?
Sean, we just discussed that last week. I think it was last week. Let me just discuss that. There are some issues.
So all we just, what I did is I split out the pieces that were finance-related, which basically almost come back to the Raymond's suggestion. So all of, when you read that initial resolution, I pulled out the pieces that were finance-related, which is literally two or three items, and I presented them to Michelle to consider. I didn't push forward because I needed some concern, like, why do I need this? And out of respect, I didn't push on it. I believe from, to your questioning, Commissioner Rexro, from in the finance, accounting, finance committee, I think the item that I'm focused on is that one that, so I believe that age four is Harris controls, to which Michelle has, I have access to everything I need to do in there. I have access to do things in systems today, like grant filings, if I were to, don't do them. In some of those cases, the process has not caught up to the, the process change hasn't caught up to the system access. Michelle has offered to make that Harris change in control. And I think it's picking a date, and so to me, if we're going forward with all of the Harris recommendations, I would pick a date. I believe the way to carry this out is we want the IT person in as kind of a neutral country because not all of those items that are going to, that are accessed through Harris have to do for my role, for my swim lane. And so to the extent they involve things like access to banking, I think that that's a treasurer example, if there are access to HR or payroll functions that involve how that coding is done, they're speaking to those. And so that's where I've come from with the resolution, honestly, is I believe that Michelle has been, I mean verbally, okay with continuing down this path, and I think it's now, it's time between now and the end of the year, make that transition. I want to do it thoughtfully with control. I don't want to move it and break something. I don't want to move it and then find out we didn't know something and we inadvertently shut somebody up we didn't intend to. None of that's my intent. So that's my selfish perspective and why I've, I don't want to say avoided, but I don't, the other pieces, I don't think they're my, under my perfect, unless you tell me, I'm all.
Does that create an issue as far as what Sean just described, as far as?
Sean has more access than he realizes to do. I think we've got a bigger question. As our goal all along since day one when this started, we've heard a lot about a goal. What's the goal? The goal was to take everything possible we could from the county clerk. That's what the goal was. Not realizing the. Not realizing the full entirety of what that means.
Wait, I, I-
No, I understand, I'm not arguing with you.
Well, I mean, I think you just said, I have more access than what I think. I don't believe that I have administrative access to shut off other people, do I?
I do.
Okay, then I'm going to pass that along to Leanna and we're going to start going through a process. I don't know whether you think it, and I say that, if there's a resolution needed to do that.
In, in the world I come from, the, the board would get a recommendation from the finance officer, say, this is what I need. And the HR person would go to the administrator, the administrator would say to the board, this is what we need and we wouldn't take five months of discussion and, and fear and, and concern with it. And, and I feel caught in the middle because it was the Saturday when I was contacted by the treasurer and he believes this was still an issue, and I don't think I'm talking out of turn. And he said it was an issue for the HR person. And he said, if you're, if the board doesn't, I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but basically, the board is, is missing an opportunity to move the process forward and the transition plan forward. And I, that was why I wanted on agenda. I think when, when this team of people right here comes and says, this is what we need, we ought to take that pretty seriously. And, and, and I don't want to do it before then. And you're a part of that team, Michelle and Jim.
I would question that, but I appreciate you saying that. Uh, but anyway, he has what he needs and, um, you know, we can say those nice things, but there's the reality of it. Um, but yeah, I mean, I've given Sean, I believe, everything that he's asked for, everything he wants. I think jointly have some concerns, I'm probably more freely go into voice, but I mean, that's okay. Some people are officers of this county and some things are tied to officers of this county. Also, I realize that county government is in need of it. I have come, I understand that it's cumbersome and moves slowly. But there are reasons for that, there have to be checks and balances, there have to be dual controls and above all else, county government must be transparent. And that is a concern. Well, whatever these, um, things that I heard the administrator say, I would like some more specifics because I'm well aware of how garnishments work and I don't know what I need to be nailed up, so I would be very interested to get some more information, which you could follow up from there. For that. But, you're never going to get to the truth of the matter if you don't hear both sides.
I, I would like, I think Commissioner Wessel's comment was really good to actually get a list, a list of the things that are needed, um, and, and present that maybe, you know-
That's next to you.
And I, again, I'm not sure what direction, but I think from a finance perspective or from a HR perspective, we can certainly put that information together and compile that.
Yeah, and I understand that, that proposed crossover interrelation, but I really think for now, for a first step, I really don't want to dip our toes into HR stuff because these are big issues and so, like, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to think, okay, if there is stuff, that's, I'm not saying anyone is accurate or inaccurate, but if there are things this committee wants to act on, I'd sure like to limit it to strictly things that advance the finance department.
I think it's difficult to look at this without taking into consideration that the original structure was everything was in the clerk's office, then the board took, made the decision to transition that to administration. Now, there's been another change, that the board made a decision to take some of the finance things that are still somewhat under administration, but now under CFO, so there's still some, so the confusion continues a little bit in terms of structure and everything else. So, when the resolution was brought up, the resolution was referenced from the standpoint of under administration. But now, it creates confusion because there's two components, two other components now. So, I think out of fairness, it was all combined in one, but now it's split again.
Yeah, the history, I understand and I don't discount the need for addressing the other part, I'm just trying to keep this committee in its lane, so.
Understood.
I'm going to go back and do mine, but I just have one other county to respond to you. And, um, this is all tied together. And dividing the commissioners to have this group handle this and this group handle this and no one knowing how this all combined together. Because if you talk about, well, there was this plan and then there was this plan and then there was this plan. As we're working between these two plans, I'm not sure where that board approval was to keep switching these gears. And maybe Commissioner Lovren can correct me because I'm not sure where that determination was made by the board because it is the board of commissioners that drive the ship.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, would you repeat that?
Your wing?
No, the-
Who's meant to make comment that, that action by these committees has to go back to executive? All decisions have to be made by executives, not?
So, when we're talking about dividing some stuff being in the administrator or some being in the clerk, being moved to the administrator and then being moved over to finance, those things have not been board approved.
Which I think is the resolution.
So, that makes me go back then, if, if that's becoming, I, I've been called stubborn by the treasurer, I think, oh, we don't need anything from others. And what I think I just heard is, you need, all right, then let's come up with a list and put everything on there and then let's have a resolution. And, and just honestly, I'm just trying to do the job that I think you asked me.
Right.
And I asked for this committee, right? So, I've heard from the public, I've heard from department heads, elected officials, and how we don't need this and, and yet, I'm sitting here an hour and a half into a meeting where I'm asking for help on certain things and I'm being told, you're doing this wrong. I don't know, Commissioner Rexro is trying to keep us in the swim lane. I'm trying to stay in my swim lane. I'm asking for help, you're asking me what's important and I laid out what's important. But then we get to the end and it's like, well, if you're not doing this right way, it doesn't-
Well, let's, let's try and move forward and, uh, I think we have-
I'm sorry, I missed anything, I don't think I've heard that you're doing anything wrong, don't, don't, don't take my help.
But I just heard that, that, like, the, these committee structures are, are-
Oh, no, that's just a clarification.
Yeah, I think-
We used to have a committee, a committee-
Finance, yeah, HR.
We used to have committees and in each committee reported to the executive board. And then the executive makes recommendations to the whole board. My comment was only that, that committees can work as long as we work that way.
Yeah, and we, we have no power to do anything anyway, so I don't know how we can work any other way. I mean, I mean, I-
Why you took the action item off of here, we're just, uh-
Right, yeah.
We are to help Sean.
We're an advisory board to the, to the entire board, so there's, there's nothing we can do here. We, we have zero power to do anything other than to suggest to other people this is a course of action. So, uh, I guess from here then, I, I agree with, let's get a list of what we think we need, we'll discuss it with the entire board where other people will be there and decide to move forward or not.
Yeah, the, the point was made that, you know, county government, the, the, how to move slow and I know that that's really frustrating for somebody who comes, you know, ready to go to work and, you know, you see them a few years of commissioners, it's like, let's do this and, you know, or, or the best example that goes on, who get to get on committees for us and think that they, you know, let's do this. And then once they realize our process and it has to go to executive and it has to go to the whole board and it's going to take another month, it's frustrating, so I understand that completely. But, um, we, we just have to be, you know, patient.
There is a difference between moving slowly and doing nothing, however, and, and I think we need to balance that out.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and that's what I was talking about in the resol, if we have to do it, let's get it on the calendar and let's do it.
Yeah.
And if we don't have to do it, then let's stop talking about it.
Nothing gets done at the end without starting it. And so, it needs to at least be started to be finished, so I, but consider this a, a restart. So, let's move on unless there's more discussion on this issue. Uh, finance resource considerations.
So, the, the next two items are, um, I think they were in materials that I passed out in our last meeting. Um, so not necessarily anything new, but when I, when we come back to the question, you all have been very good about asking me, what do you need? And to me, it comes back to these two things, resources, take the flavor of people and then resources take the flavor of tools. I'm not exactly sure how to move forward with the people question, but instead of, um, maybe looking at, you know, I, I hear immediately our reference points be, was that roller, that this, that, that, I want to take it out of that context. And what I tried to do is write down on slide number two, what I, what I need out of this. And I won't read it off, but to be successful in this role, like, if we want to have a, and it's not, this isn't about needs. We're going to set this up so that it's sustainable over time. I believe that this finance role needs to be able to, um, function on the strategic and the periodic episodic kind of things that go on, like, we're going through a budget process. Um, we want to transition work, we want to implement a new system, we want to implement a new chart of accounts. The only way we're going to be successful doing that, I believe, is if this role is supportive in a way with resources that need to, this role be a more exception based. Like, it, it should, the day to day business should carry on regardless of whether we have a budget meeting, whether we're moving transition teams, whether we're doing a special project or whether we have a board meeting or not. So, I've got to get to the point where I'm able to spend my time on those things that are by exception. That doesn't mean that, you know, when we're doing compensation, we get an exception, oh, look, here's the bill, it's above what we thought Raymond was going to submit, exception, into the exception mode. But the week to week, day to day battles, that, when we get stuck in that, that is all consuming. So, um, I need to get to the point where the expectation is with folks on the finance team that things are raised on an exception basis with recommendations, right? Like, don't come and go, hey, I think you're forgetting about, come to me with this happened, here's my recommendation, here's the journal entry we need to make, I just need to decide here. Good. That's, that's my, where we've got to get to. That isn't, if you sit back in the corner and watch the daily flow, anywhere near it is. What I proposing, like, what, what's needed to do that, I need, in those blue words, this is what I need from, um, people resources. So, I need somebody to actually manage ongoing workload independently. I need somebody, when we have special analysis that goes on, think about how many special slides and materials we've tried to share when we're doing something, including the community are looking at. Um, it's just me, the only human eyes that have ever seen 99% of that stuff are me. I feel very exposed, I feel overwhelmed trying to put it together, but I also think that's the, that's what's needed now, so I'm doing that. But I can't run into, well, you know, he or she is a payroll clerk, he or she is a, um, a, a council payable clerk. I need resources that feel like, if today the most important thing is we have a meeting to discuss how we're going to move forward with a chart of accounts, I'm in, I got your back, let me go do some homework, I'm at with you. Non, so, we, we recognize today that, and again, it's buried in a, you know, take my word for it, if you believe the Raymond things, we're underreported, we, we struggle with standard reporting. Creating that is, if, we will take staffs and misses, but I need help moving the ball with that. Um, so somebody has to be able to sit there with a whiteboard today and go, what does the board need? Like, when I think about something like, um, is there adequate information about our current cash position? Yes or no? I need somebody, I need a partner, I need a, um, somebody on my team that can help me go away, think about that, what would you want to see? We need, we, we run into the problem in the past with balancing workloads. So, I need the ability to not have the meltdown if somebody, that has been, you know, has, uh, child sick, has sickness themselves and has to miss work, like, we can't shut down. And so, in a two-person team, redundancy is almost impossible to build. I think we need to build backups, support for that. Whether the answer is on the team or whether that is, there is inherent capacity elsewhere, if we broke down the department walls, we may be able to get some of that, I feel like some of that's needed. Um, and I need somebody who can work across departments. I see so much and, and it's not a criticism of anyone personally, but we, we break down when it's like, I got to open that door to go talk to somebody. I want everybody on my team to be able to expect it to talk to everybody, not, not have to, you know, break down, ask, and I walk next door. So, that's where I want to move, I need help with a resource to do that. I don't, I didn't go as far as laying out how to, how does a three-person team work, didn't go as far as saying that one reports to another, I didn't, I didn't want to, you know, because then I think we get into the, we react to it. This is kind of what I, I needed, I laid it out, we've had a discussion with, with my team about this is my vision for the meeting, um, and then Darcy worked, was not to be a part of that. But beyond that, I don't, I don't quite know the next step, but I do think we want to, to move forward with getting, taking a step there and, and we may take a step one direction and then realize we've got to adjust because other things change, that's okay, but I think, I think we're at the time where people resource, this is what's up, so I'll shut up and if you have reactions, if any of that sounds inconsistent, I'll give them the feedback.
Any comments or questions on that? I mean, is it reasonable to assume the request you have in additional staffing reflects this?
Yes.
So, I mean, just to the-
That's where I was going.
Okay, just, any other further discussion on that item? Commissioner Lovren?
Um, well, just, you've got, it's this, you've got payroll under existing, so I made my comment earlier, I just think that if, if proposed as a new person, that that ought to include payroll. That's just my comment, or my thought on it, but maybe I'm, maybe I'm not reading it right, maybe it does, so.
I'm, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I probably led to that confusion. Would I, would I actually explain this, thank you? What I started with was a list of all the things with our current roles and that was my existing bucket. It just so happens that if you read what was posted or available on our, um, our, uh, just job descriptions, all I was trying to show here, and I probably did probably on this page now to your question, is that I'm coming back to what I care about in payroll, I would have written like this, which is the blue words in that existing, Commissioner Lovren. So, that's my, that's my bad, I was trying to be capable to document and say, what would I make this look like?
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay, can we move on to next steps?
So, the same thing from a system perspective, um, I, I explained where I think we're going in the immediate term with, I, I do want to explore functionality that may exist with our current systems. Trying to ask Leanna to help me with that. I think that's the, regardless of what we do, there is going to be value in understanding that. What I've asked is, who wants to be there at the table when we have, we're going to take a step somewhere, somebody's going to come in with a dog and puppy and want to talk to us about, here's what you could do in Harris. And I, I, I welcome to the table anybody who, um, who has an interest in that. I think the price of admission though is, I, I, I don't want, um, progress to be, uh, assigned by, but that'll never work here, we would never do that. Like, I'd like to understand what is possible first. And so, that bus is kind of leaving the station in my mind unless you tell me. Pause it. The second piece, because that isn't a commitment to anything, that's not a commitment to dog lovers, it's not a commitment to words, what's out there? And hopefully, there's a little bit of urban myth busting there. It is or it isn't, we would all agree that it is, that, that there's a possibility where it's more. The second piece gets a little skittier when we get into, do you go beyond these four laws in current systems to explore others? I think I've been making the case for why we've got to be thoughtful if we're going to go out with a request or proposal, like, what that entails, because I don't, personally, I don't think- I don't, personally, I don't think we're looking for a general ledger. I think we're looking for an integrated set of financial systems that talk to each other, that improve efficiency and workflow within the county. And that's broad. And that will take, that can take different directions. I think there's a feeling that there's a bias coming in to this. I assure you that I don't, I wouldn't, I couldn't have told you anybody other than the, the big providers of software out there in the macro environment, that would never be interested in county business. You know, they're the SAPs of the world, or Workdays, or, those aren't who we're talking about. I didn't know who BSN A was. I've learned what BSN A does for us now. There's a possibility of an integrated solution. Apparently, that proposal's been on the table for multiple years, through multiple CIP processes. And I think it's worth looking at. But at some point, and I don't think this is a question for today, but maybe I'm clearing up, or I'm going to need a little bit of direction on how much do you want to open that up, depending, what's the expectation? Do we want to go out for a little bit? Do I want to explore options? Does anybody have ideas beyond where we are today? Because I laid out my vision, the two things that I think are absolutely critical, and I think they say it, I did not claim these words or frame them, but if you read their own, on slide three, their words to the county, we first the county review its accounting software, we recommend only considering software options that are tailored specifically to governments. I totally, five months in the job, that to me is mission number one. Second, integrate general ledger, payroll, house payroll, receiving, property taxes, as being their words for integration. That is my, those are my two, like, if I'm going to talk to anybody, if they don't do both of those, then I don't even think they're a viable candidate. But I'm open to taking a list that we think that there are options to measure, you know, compete against each other with that. But I'm not, I don't think it's a great use of time to go back and look at little pieces, parts. At some point, we accept that the great majority of items in this whole 33-page list have something to do with technology. And I think there's a long lead time on this. It's going to take us years to go through this. And I've heard from the broader board, you better go slow, you better think. We've been going slow. We haven't invested since the 1990s. I was going to go make a, like, think about a rate of return chart. What would it cost us in 1990 if we would have put some money into systems 27 years later? I feel like we've got to get over the hurdle here relatively shortly, because our effectiveness and our efficiency is dependent on it. And what I'm afraid, getting the whispers in the back of my ear from other counties, like, I haven't changed the chart of accounts. Do you understand what you're exposed to? Like, no, I really don't. I don't. But I've been advised that we better be thoughtful with, that we better have a plan that says, if we're going to start to change things, there's a sequence that really matters. That sequence is, is it process first? Is it system first? Is it addressed with a Band-Aid? Things like, let's change the chart of accounts now, do not change the system for two years. Does that mean we're going to go through two conversions? Can you do that in the middle of the year? You only want to do that at year end. So all those things are resonating, but we're kind of stuck in neutral. And so at the right time, I haven't gotten that far with the transition team. Just to complete the circuit, we need, resources, we need, the county needs, Sean doesn't need anything. The Lelandon County needs a commitment to resources to make the finance role, the county role work. And we need to think about systems that will support modernization of things that, you know, we're kind of stuck in today. So that's my read of the whole 33 items. Not asking for anything with that, but I would love guidance as we go forward with the transition team on, here's, here's a thought. What if you approach it this way, and then knowing that that's going to take a run or approval or consensus? So that's all I have.
Open discussion, sharing.
You know, there's always been resistance to change. And I'm a teacher again. In the 1950s, they invented a pencil with an eraser. And teachers in that time were concerned, because now kids will think it's going to be okay to make mistakes. And even moving from ink pens to pencils was challenged, it'll never work. It's bad. I encourage you, as one commissioner, move forward. We need to do it.
I agree.
I would be, you all in the movement, but I will, I believe the right way to do it is to do it in the context of what's been presented to us in terms of a set of recommendations in the past from Raymond, but.
Well, we voted, the entire board has voted to accept the recommendation, to accept that report. So either we change our mind, or we move forward. All right, next item. Open, I guess, open discussion was, unless, do you have something else you want to add at that point, Sean?
No.
Is there any, I think we've kind of had open discussion generally through the whole meeting, so can we pass through that unless there is something, go to budget, process, and timeline?
We're getting there, right?
Yep.
I think so. The only thing I thought, Commissioner Rexroth, next week, trying to picture how it works, is totally following your thought process to winnow that down to the point where you can't make a decision until you have, like, it's the catch-22, I need a number, but make a decision, but I can't get a number without making a decision.
Right.
And so we're stuck a little bit in that mood. If we're getting down to the few, hopefully, I don't know, I can either have a spreadsheet or something here where I can plug in a couple of numbers, so that we could see, if you take this out, that out, you know, I don't mind on-the-spot feedback. So that if those are, knowing that answer is helpful to, you know, kind of finalizing the last few strokes, I'm happy to tell me how that would best work.
Well, I was going to ask you if you, or someone could, as we say a yes, just put an amount in a cell and have a total down below, and so there's a running total, and we get to the end, we would know that our yeses right now totaled X. I think that would be helpful. For me, it would be, because I was going to just try and do it.
We can do it.
Should be able to do some, I'm not sure if we can do it from here with the Zoom or something, but put it up on the screen. So we'll have to look at technology and see what can be done.
You can press green here.
But I do think that if we get near the end here, there's, it's, let me say this, and then you tell me if you disagree. Like, I don't think, because of the variability with the number of the items, that we will not have an answer to. What would be the next revenue? What will be the next revenue? What will be, there's going to be a wide range of those things. So I don't think there's an expectation of precision as much as you look, there was a gut reaction today when we looked at the list, and it was a million cents. I still feel a little bit queasy. Within some range, I feel like we're getting down to kind of the smaller numbers that are probably, the expectation isn't that is zero, is my guess. There's a range probably in people's heads, and then their stomach. And as we get there, I can try and help with that number ranging. It gets a little bit tougher, because it's a lot of assumptions on, I can tell you what historically the low and high point have been in year-over-year tax increases, but I have some guarantee of future results. Yeah, so that's where I was going to go. But if that works, we can take that step next week.
Yeah, I felt good with the progress we made today, really, after item number one. We got to wheel through some stuff, and got there. And so I feel like we're poised, you know, to get it done, so.
I appreciate it.
Next meeting date?
You want me to look out, I think the suggestion was, rather not, don't extend any given amount of stuff we just, you know, discussed, so you can have a reaction. But maybe get a couple of meetings, maybe three weeks or two, two or three weeks, kind of timeline. Does that make sense?
Do we have schedules open here that we can, you wanted to have two more of your, a couple of, at least.
Yeah, I don't know how that would go. I can change that. We could change that to adapt to what we need to with your schedules.
No, we've got, the first week of November, we've got Election Day on the 7th, so I'm not sure how that impacts the clerk's office.
You're going to have to establish staff available.
Okay, so the 6th, 8th, and 9th.
Yeah, breitie is Veterans Day observed that week. Yep.
That day, and there's a county that will be there, and we'll be here until 9:00 on Tuesday. So.
You have that week before, though.
This.
2nd, 3rd?
Yep. That's about, was it just about two weeks away, give or take?
I won't be available that week, but I don't think that's an issue.
Is there a day that week? I don't, it looks so nice right now, because it doesn't have a meeting in it. But.
If you'd like to come for the Halloween party on the 31st.
Tuesday. We've been doing Wednesdays, is it? That being Wednesday, the 1st, is that, what's that look like?
Until 2:15, I'm good.
Well, we can do that as a morning meeting, a couple hours. What is it, are you okay?
I won't, I won't. I'll be out of the country.
That's, that's okay.
That whole week. But that doesn't, I mean, that doesn't, this is fine, Sean can just.
Are you looking, die?
I'm fine.
Wednesday, the 1st. Do I do it in the morning, then?
All right.
What time?
Like, 9:00, well, I can do 9:00. Is 9:00 o'clock create hardships? I guess that was, it was giving me a little bit of.
I mean, I have to be here early, but being here early is a thing.
I.
I'm okay. You don't want to.
9:00 AM?
Does that work?
Sure.
Wednesday, the 1st?
Mm-hmm.
At 9:00, you said?
Yep. And you're sure that's not, doesn't create hardship for you to, no?
I'm hoping on the 1st.
Okay.
I'm not here in the Halloween.
Keeping in mind, our, our purpose is really to assist in any way we can. So November 1 comes, and you said, I wish I didn't have to have that meeting, because I got too much to do. We postponed it.
Or if something really urgent comes up, and you need us before then, that's, that's what we're here for, so.
Thank you.
Public comment. I guess we can go to now. Commissioner comments. There being none, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moving.